Members of council, correspondence requiring action. I want to make you aware that the requests for waiving of the permit fees from the Durham Community Legal Clinic and access to Justice Hub have been withdrawn as they are working with the city Durham College on the access to Justice Hub as a Teaching Cities Initiative. Can I get a motion to withdraw this item? Moved by Councilor Carter, seconded.
No withdrawal. Moved by Councilor Carter, seconded by Counselor Bates. Questions? Counselor McQuaid England?
So just so that we are clear, we are removing Counselor, uh, council, Council 1875, which is for the legal clinic?
So this is the request from the Durham Community Legal Clinic?
Yeah, 1875?
Yes, they have found an alternate way to do this, working through the city and Durham College on the access to Justice Hub as a Teaching City Initiative.
Perfect, so to be clear, the money will be coming from the Teaching City Initiatives? We have about $30,000 left in there and some of that money will be used towards this?
Mr. Sharma?
Through your worship, as to how they're funding this, that's not necessarily clear, but what they are committed to doing is working collaboratively with the city and Durham College towards the initiative, and that's why they're withdrawing the request.
Okay, sorry, just one more question. So as it stands right now, they still need the money, but now they're going to go through the Teaching Cities, so they're going to try, are they going to come back with like a proposal to the Teaching Cities Committee to have this funded through that? Is that the assumption that is being made here?
Through you, your worship, we will not fund the permit. We will work with them from a Teaching Cities perspective, and they'll, they'll make other arrangements from that perspective.
So from the Teaching Cities perspective, will they be receiving any funding?
That's very likely, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So this was through the agency's initiative to have this withdrawn? Okay, so it has been moved and seconded on the withdrawal. All those in favor? Opposed? None? That carries. Members of council, we'll go through the staff reports one at a time. Well, I'll ask for a mover and a secuder for each, each of them?
I'll move.
Okay, so, sorry, on the first report is CNCL 1876, Tribute Community Centre, Temporary One-Day Extension of Liquor License for an Outdoor Area for the Oshawa Generals Home Opener BBQ.
I'll move the recommendation.
Move the recommendation?
Okay, moved by Counselor Piterbecky. I heard someone speak, somebody else speak, was Counselor Carter. I will take you as the secuder. Questions to the recommendation? I have one question on this item. This is a reoccurring issue each and every year. Shouldn't it be part of the delegated authority of staff just to make this happen?
Yes, we can certainly make that happen.
The reason, reason for that is sometimes you might not be able to get a meeting in August. So if staff is okay with that as direction, or do you want a motion after this to make it?
My recommendation would be that it should be a motion. We have a written agreement with Spectra for operating and managing the facility, so we should have that in writing.
Okay, so we'll deal with that immediately after we deal with this. So on this item, 1876, moved and seconded about the extension of the liquor license for the home opener of, of the Oshawa Generals. All those in favor? Opposed? None? That carries. I'll turn to Mr. Sharma. Would you like this to be, the item and the event to be referred to the annual review that takes place for events, or?
Through you, your worship, if council were to consider wording to say, let's not be directed to update the delegated authority to allow for the authorization on a go-forward basis?
Okay, so we haven't moved on from this item, so it would be appropriate to deal with it at this time?
Mr. Mayor, how about, how about staff bring back something to, because we've dealt with it for this year, staff bring something back to the first available committee meeting with the recommended wording and what delegation that they are expecting to, so that we don't do this on the fly and we make sure that it's appropriate for staff and we'll work for the future?
Would your motion be, Counselor McQuaid England, to refer this back to Corporate Services for staff?
There's no motion on the table, I'm just making a suggestion that staff could come with a, with a request on the next available agenda committee meeting, explaining why the delegation of authority needs to be changed, and I think that would deal with it and then make sure that the wording is appropriate.
Counselor McQuaid England, thank you. Mr. Sharma, you understand the direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, thank you, we'll take that as direction. Members of council, if I ask you to turn to page two, item CNCL 1874, sole sourcing of peer review and community risk assessment? I'm looking for Counselor Sanders, are you moving the item?
No.
Okay, I'm looking to get it on to the floor.
I'll move the recommendation, your worship.
Moved by Counselor Piterbecky, seconded by Counselor Carter. Questions to the item? We'll start with Counselor Sanders.
Anyhow, thank you. Can somebody tell me what the cost was in 2013 to do the Fire Master Plan?
I will look for staff, Mr. Sharma?
Through your worship, I don't have the exact number. I do believe it was approximately $100,000 to do so.
So $100,000 in 2013 it cost to do the Fire Master Plan? And then there's a five-year review and it's another $44,000 to do the review?
Through you, worship, certainly Chief Clark can provide greater detail, but my understanding is it's the risk assessment and the peer review.
Okay, now, please, now, Chief Clark, he was here and gave us a review, what was that review? It was just a review of the plan going forward?
Mr. Sharma? Chief Clark's in the room, so the question can be directed to Chief Clark. Chief Clark, you heard that question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the five-year review was a review of the master fire plan at the midpoint, which was March of 2018.
So we're at the midpoint, and now they're coming to do the next five years on the same plan they did in 2013?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it would be my intention that we provide a peer review of the five-year review, which is the work that staff has completed, and include a community risk assessment as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McQuaid England?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The original scope of the work for the $100,000, what did it include when we first went with Dylan? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to whatever staff may be able to answer that question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it was, the scope of work would have been to create a 10-year master fire plan for the city of Oshawa and fire services.
Okay. So, just so that I can understand the timeline, and once I've stated it, I'm hoping for any corrections if I've misunderstood. Dylan was hired as a consultant for $100,000 to do a 10-year review. At the five-year mark, staff have done a review of Dylan's review, and now we're going to pay Dylan $44,000 to peer view, peer review our review of their review process?
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Dylan Consulting provided the Fire Master Plan, which is a 10-year guiding document for the city of Oshawa. Inside of the Fire Master Plan is a recommendation at the midpoint, the Fire Master Plan be reviewed, which as fire chief, I did that. And what I'm suggesting now is to provide a peer review of our work and to include a community risk assessment as well.
Okay, so inside that five-year review, within the original plan that was set out in 2013, was it always going to be staff that was going to do the five-year review? Was that always the intention and that was that what was approved by council at the time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, the, as fire chief, it was my responsibility to complete the five-year review, there was no direction to, to have that go outside.
Okay, so there was, so there was no direction on how the five-year review took place, so as the fire chief, you took the undertaking of doing the review? And through you, Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding now, you believe that that review needs to be peer reviewed for accuracy and for standard practices when it relates to these types of reviews? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm very confident of the five-year review that staff have completed. This would validate the work that has been completed and would also bring us in line with the legislative requirements set out in the FPPA with regards to community risk assessment.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, how do we know if it's a peer review, which is supposed to be an objective review of the five-year review that you've done, how do we know that it's going to validate what you've said? Doesn't a peer review bring in outside individuals to look for, to make sure that there's no discrepancies, that everything is in line? So how, are we paying Dylan to validate your results?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Dylan Consulting has been well established in Ontario and Canada, they've, they've been doing this since 1946, they have 700 employees, 17 locations across Canada.
That wasn't my question, I'm not, I'm not invalidating what Dylan can do, but you've said that the purpose of this is to validate your review. And my understanding of a peer review is that it's meant to, it's meant to review the process with many different people to ensure that everything is what it should be. And if that means that it's been validated, it's been validated, but it also means that if there are discrepancies or if there are issues, the peer review would bring those issues to light. So I was just wondering what you meant by this was to validate your review that's already been done? Has that been discussed with Dylan consultants on how the peer review will take place?
Mr. Sharma?
Through you, worship, the, the findings of the consultant would be the independent findings of the consultant. We're confident in the work that's been done by staff, however, they'd be undertaking that peer review in order to determine their findings, as well as Chief Clark has indicated, this will bring us into legislative compliance with community risk assessment that was passed earlier this year, Chief Clark?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
So of the $44,000 that is being reviewed, that is being asked to be approved today, how much of that is for the peer review and how much of that is for the community assessment to ensure that we meet the legislation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it'd be encapsulating, the scope of work will include both.
Is there one, is there one portion of work that is more than the other? There's no, where did the num, where did the $44,000, how did we come up with the number for $44,000?
Through you, worship, my understanding is that initial discussions set an upset limit for the work to be done, which was inclusive of both. I don't believe that we could articulate the difference between the cost for the peer review portion and the community risk assessment at this point. I think those would be numbers that, as far as greater clarity, would be once councils made this decision that we could, we could identify exactly what the breakdown would be.
Was this discussion undertaken with staff or was this discussion undertaken with Dylan as well?
Through you, worship, there, there was a requirement to have some level of knowledge from an upset limit perspective, so there was initial conversations undertaken with the consultant.
And how many sort of meeting, was it, was it a meeting? How did that consultation take place with, with Dylan to come up with this upset number?
My understanding is there was a discussion with Chief and Dylan Consulting in order to determine the scope, a, an upset limit from a cost perspective that would be proposed to undertake this work.
And does part of this cost include the MPACT? We had been quoted about $25,000 in order to get information through MPACT that technically is ours, but has been given back to MPACT. Does this money include the information from MPACT? Because in, it's my understanding, in order to do the community risk assessment, you need that information. So does this $44,000 include the MPACT information? Is Dylan going to be buying that information on behalf of the city for the purpose of this project?
Mr. Sharma?
Through you, worship, my, once again, my understanding is Dylan's extensive experience in completing these community risk assessments, and they will collect the information that they are required to collect in order to deliver a community risk assessment in compliance with the new legislation.
And, and do you believe as the city manager, or maybe the chief can answer this, that the required information would include the MPACT information?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I can't answer that for Dylan exactly on what the data is that they will be utilizing, but I can tell you, they, they do, from a conversation, they do look at all sources of data, including FPPA, and have completed some community risk assessments that have been well received in the, in the province of Ontario.
Where were these community assessments done?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe one recently was in Mississauga and, as well as St. Catherine's.
And Dylan's relationship with Mississauga and St. Catherine's, were they the original consultant that did previous work? Were they sole sourced there as well?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have that information.
If we, how do we know that this is the best price that we can get if we're not going to go out to tender?
Mr. Sharma?
Through you, worship, my understanding is, should we choose to go with another vendor, there would be a learning curve that would, that they would need to, of course, need to go through. The, the efficiency is gained by the fact that Dylan Consulting completed our 10-year master plan and therefore can, for lack of better terms, hit the ground running with this review.
efficiencies, okay. So could staff give me their impression of what a peer review is? Because I think that I might have, based on what I understand it from a scientific and academic perspective, is fairly different than what's being proposed here. So could staff explain to me what they believe a peer review is and how that takes place?
Mr. Sharma?
Through you, worship, essentially it would be validation, excuse me, validation in what we believe to be the case, but they would be reviewing the five-year update and should they find any discrepancies, they certainly would be reporting that back to council, but they would be doing an independent review and certainly leveraging any information that was available to assist them in doing so.
Mr. Mayor, just another question through you to the city manager. How is it an independent review if they're legitimately reviewing a review that took ba, took place from the original information that they give? How is it objective? They're obviously not going to come back and say, oh, by the way, 10 years ago, we made a massive mistake here, we haven't, we didn't do a good job. I mean, I can't imagine that they, do you think that they would come back objectively and say, when we look at this, our 10-year review was not up to snuff, it was not what it should have been, and you did not get your value for money in this audit? Do you think that they're objective enough to do that?
Through you, your worship, I don't know that I'm in a position to challenge a council-approved Fire Master Plan.
Just to, just to speak to this, Mr. Mayor, I won't be supporting the sole source. And regardless of the issues that it appears that I may have had with staff in the past as it related to fire services, and understanding that I'm not coming back, so this is not going to be something that I'm going to be part of in the future, but I have a few concerns for my council colleagues to consider when making this decision. Number one, those of us, or any of us that know the academic way in which a peer review is done, it's put out to individual objective people that were not part of the original process. That is the purpose and point of a peer review, so that that way, new eyes can look at it from a new perspective and ensure that we're moving forward. I don't like the, the sort of circle peer review process that's happened. Dylan was paid $100,000 to make a Fire Master Plan, then we reviewed Dylan, and then we're asking Dylan to review us. At what point do we ever find out whether or not there was changes or things that could have been done differently if we only have the same eyes looking at it all the time? I don't think that this should be sole sourced, I think that this should go out for tender. This isn't about hitting the ground running, this is about making sure that our safety of our residents are taken into consideration and we have the most objective viewpoints possible. And this is not to say that Dylan isn't objective, it's to say that they were the original ownership of the plan, which means they cannot peer review themselves. And staff can peer, staff can review the process, but a legitimate peer review takes place when we have new eyes looking at it. So I really hope that my colleagues would consider that this might not be the best way forward. And if there is legislative responsibilities that we need to make in terms of the community risk assessment that was approved, and the time is running out, well then, maybe we should have been looking at this sooner and not having this come so late in the game to the table of council. I won't be supporting this, I will be asking for a recorded vote, and I do hope my colleagues will consider that there's also no way to validate whether or not we're getting the best value for money on this item, because we haven't put it out to ensure that we have, that we are getting the best price.
Counselor Bates?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Through you, can you tell me if anyone from Dylan was originally, who did the first master plan, 10-year plan, was a in fire services?
I'll have to go to the chief, chief?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I understand the question in, in, with regards to Oshawa or in collectively in the province.
You, we have a master plan that was written in 2013 by the company, Dylan. Did anyone who participated in writing that plan have any experience in fire services?
Through you, Mr., Mr. Mayor, it's my knowledge that yes, they, they did have extensives.
Okay, so that means that the people who wrote the plan are, and I have to agree with my colleague, that they are reviewing themselves, because they're reviewing your actions on their plan? Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, they would be reviewing the scope of work that, that we completed, that staff completed, not their work. It's the scope of work that we completed.
Yes, I understand that, it's the scope of work that we, that you have completed. What I'm asking is, it cannot be an objective review if they took part in making the plan originally.
Through you, worship, if I may, Dylan's review is of our analysis to the council-approved Fire Master Plan.
Okay.
So their review will be to our analysis of the five-year update to the Fire Master Plan.
All right.
It's a council-approved Fire Master Plan, we've done our analysis, we're confident in our analysis, their peer review would be validation to the council-approved Fire Master Plan.
Okay, if I may say, my idea of a peer review would be another fire services group in another city of equal size with the same services that we offer, reviewing the plan that we have in place. Do you not think that would be a peer review? We're not asking for a whole new plan, we're asking to, if we have, in the eyes of other firefighters or other fire managers, if we have achieved what we planned on achieving in the first half of our master plan.
Through you, worship, I don't know that that would be the norm as far as a process for a city of our size. One, they wouldn't have been involved in our master planning, and, and, number two, I don't know that that's ever been done.
Let me put it another way, I've participated in peer review, and I've had them done for myself. The only people who were eligible to review my work according to the standards set by the Nurses Association were nurses who did the very same work that I did. Not me, not my boss, not the people who are working for me, but the people who do the very same work that I do. So do you see the difference? That's what a peer review is? It's, it's not someone who is, has written a plan and seeing if you're following that plan, that's not a peer review. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Mr. Sharma?
Through you, worship, I'm not sure I can say much other than, this is the council-approved Fire Master Plan, this is the five-year update to the Fire Master Plan. The peer review that's being done is a, is to review where we are to the council-approved Fire Master Plan. And this is, would say, the norm for larger municipalities, and as far as the community risk assessment, the legislation, I believe, was approved earlier this year.
Yeah, I think that we're both on different levels, thank you, in talking to peer review.
If I may ask, I think if you direct the question to the fire chief asking that if other fire services review fire services, I think that's what you're trying to ask.
Yes.
I'm correct? Chief?
I thought I said it rather clearly.
Through you, Mr., Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of that process existing, and that whole scope of work would have to be drafted, and as well as, I'm not sure there would be a body of fire chiefs that are even willing to participate in that process, but that would have to be put out.
Okay, so if, if, as part of your particular job status, you were required to have a peer review of your own personal work, would you ask only anybody to do it, or would you not ask the people who know what's expected of your job?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the only way I can answer that is, the peer review, I would want someone doing the peer review that understands the scope of work that was undertaken, such as, in this case, it would be Dylan, because they understand the scope of the master fire plan.
They only understand it within their own context because they wrote it though, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, they are industry experts.
Yes, but there are other industry experts, are there not?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, possibly.
I would expect that in a peer review, another industry expert would be the ones reviewing a single entity. Anyway, back to that, just to speak to this for one more minute, if I may, I have to agree with Counselor McQuaid England that I will not be voting in favor of this expenditure, because I think the process is flawed. If all you want to do is see whether or not you have achieved the first half of your 10-year plan, I think we agreed that you did when we voted on it back in June. So I will agree with my fellow counselor on this one, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there's some confusion over the use of the term peer review. I'm from an academic world, I understand if a professor writes a piece, dissertation, a thesis, it's reviewed by other professors in the field. I get that, and that relates to what Counselor Bates said about perhaps having other fire services review other fire services, that's not done. I think what we're talking about here is not so much a peer review as an audit. So every year when we do our financial statements, for instance, we have our financial experts and they analyze it, and they put in their report, and we bring in KPMG, or we bring in an outside auditing firm to audit that, to make sure that the processes are correct and the end results are workable, are in fact verifiable. What we're doing here is something similar. We're bringing in an expert outside firm who happened to create, help create the original report, and they're now going to come in, just like KPMG does, and they're going to take a look at the processes and the ways that our staff arrived at their conclusions at their five-year review. That's where they're going to basically audit. Now, to call it a peer review, perhaps that creates some confusion. They're basically going to audit and say whether we got it right. The fact that it's on their own master plan is, is relevant in the sense that they are conversant with the details of what that is involved in that plan. So to have another firm come in and get all the way up to speed, that's like saying, well, okay, we're not going to bring KPMG in to audit this, even though we've paid them and they created the original report, we're going to go outside and bring in a whole other audit firm to do it. That's incredibly costly and to get them up to speed. All that Dylan's coming in is, they're conversant with the plan, they're going to audit basically what our staff did to come up with their results, and they're going to give their opinion. And from that, we can make an factual decision. That's what's being asked to do here, and they're also asking them to conduct a community risk assessment, because they're the experts that are able to do that, and they're going to work with our staff to complete it. I will be supporting this, and it says up to, not to exceed $40,000, and considering the scope of the work, I think that's reasonable. Thank you.
Actually, Counselor Kerr, you may have the not updated version, the amount is $44,000.
Sorry, it just says that in front of me on the, yeah.
Counselor John Neal?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. When do we have to comply with this new legislation, through you, Mr. Mayor?
To the chief?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It'd be July 1st, 2019.
Okay.
And then every five years.
Will Dylan Consulting be consulting with the Oshawa Firefighters Association at all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely, yes.
Okay, and when would that start, like if this was passed?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that will be part of the consult process, and they will be, that will be all laid out and identified.
So, what about, now, can you divide out the, the different community processes or where certain communities are at in regards to the pressures to have a better service and not be divided out, the communities themselves?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Are you referring to the community risk assessment?
Yes.
Yeah. So, we would be definitely ahead of the curve in many municipalities. Speaking with many fire chiefs, they haven't started that process yet, other than other ones that have gone outside and had consultants engaged.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. I didn't hear that last part. What was that?
Chief, could you repeat that, please?
Other than any departments that may have gone outside and hired consultants to start the process, that I'm not aware of.
Okay. Now, I mentioned a report from the Durham Region Works Department in regards to, that went to Durham Regional Council in regards to their trucks not being able to navigate private roads in the development in the north and north of the College University, all that townhouse area. Some people call it the barracks, like north of there. But that area there, is that going to be addressed in regards to our equipment having to access that, those roads? Because if the region can't do it, I'd like to know how we're going to do it.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. All areas of the city will be included in the assessment.
And when's this going to be done by again? When will I know if trucks, if our trucks can go into those private roads? Like, if there's a fire in six months, when, and that, when those places are bought, sold, closed, and people are in there, when do I know that it's safe, our fire trucks can go in there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have done, Oshawa Fire Service has done preliminary inspections of those areas, and, and we have found no access issues to date. But that will be included as per when the scope of work would be completed. My best estimate would be four to six months.
Have you contacted Durham Works Department on that report at all that I mentioned a month ago? In regards to why their trucks can't access those private roads? Through you, Mr. Mayor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, I have not.
Well, it seems like an emergency to me, through you, Mr. Mayor, that if Durham Region has said that they can't get in there with their trucks, why are we waiting so long to contact Durham Region? I thought I was told a month ago that we were going to contact them and find out immediately. Like, this is time sensitive, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is time sensitive.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reiterate that Fire Services has been conducting inspections with our apparatus in those areas and reported back so far that there's no concerns.
Well, I hate to keep laboring this, but why is that reported by Durham Region then in regards to their trucks not able to get in there?
Mr. Disky?
Through you, Mayor Henry. I've been told that the issue is with garbage or waste vehicles.
Yeah.
That they're concerned about picking up the garbage safely. It doesn't have anything to do with our fire service vehicles at this time.
Well, it's their size of vehicles. Okay. Could I get something in writing then in regards to, we've contacted the region, and so I can put that to rest and I don't have to keep asking about it. Okay, so, in regards, going back, Mr. Mayor, to the Oshawa Firefighters Association, are, is this, their comments, are they going to be part of, are they going to be peer reviewed by Dylan, or are they just going to go straight into a report and that's it? They're not going to be filtered? There's not going to be any coming back to a committee, their comments? Are they going straight into the report, unfiltered?
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I've requested that there be a consultation with the Firefighters Association and Dylan collectively.
Though their comments be coming back right off their, their comments be coming back clean right to this report, will they be any way, I guess, will there be meetings over their comments? Or is that what you're saying, through you, Mr. Mayor? Will there be meetings over their comments? Or are their comments coming back clean, unfiltered, onto a report?
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would assume that Dylan will professionally develop the consultation, and all comments and materials shall be received.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Counselor Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I'd just like some further details on the community risk assessment. How will the community be involved in this? What's the process?
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We would have Dylan complete with the consultation with the Firefighters Association and staff, and then would be my understanding that there would be a public consultation as well.
Okay. And in regards to other municipalities with this new legislation, are we, are all fire services hiring a consultant to do this work, or is this something that we can do a community assessment in-house? Is this, is it mandated that we have to do, do it through consultants?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The mandate is that it's legislation through the FPPA, Fire Protection Prevention Act, that it must be completed. How fire services are handling that, I can't answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands.
I just had a follow-up question based on the previous speakers.
Follow-up question based on?
Yes.
The previous speaker?
Thank you, Counselor Pitterbecky. I know I've already spoken. I'm speaking to the mayor.
Counselor McQuaid England, you have the floor.
Thank you.
You have a previous, a question, the previous speaker, which would be Counselor Shields?
Well, it raised a question that I'd like to ask staff.
The previous speaker's Counselor Shields. Question has to relate to what he said.
Okay, Counselor Shields. I'm hoping that you may want to consider clarifying in terms of the community outreach, what will take place in that, since I'm not able to ask that question myself, and whether or not the high-needs areas will be included, like within the health neighborhoods map.
So, actually, you don't have to do that. Chief, you heard the question outside of the rules of procedure. I'm going to ask you to answer that question, please.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't defined all the, obviously, all the scope of work of the project, but that scope of work will be included, and there'll be consult within city staff, Dylan, and Firefighters Association on all levels of scope of work of the project.
So, for clarification, that, what Counselor McQuaid England just said about the mapping is going to be included in this? The healthy neighbors, the healthy neighborhoods, right?
The health neighborhoods mapping?
Yes.
Through you, Mayor Henry.
In terms of high-needs areas.
Through you, Mayor Henry, if I may. Our public consultation process will consider numerous factors, and I'm confident that we will look at the health neighborhood mapping as well.
Thank you. Okay, a recorded vote was called on this item. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going to ask the clerk, who called for the recorded vote? Okay, Counselor McQuaid England has called for the vote.
Counselor McQuaid England?
On sole sourcing, no.
Counselor Neal?
No.
Counselor Pitterbecky?
Yes.
Counselor Sanders?
No.
Counselor Shields?
No.
Counselor Aker?
Yes.
Counselor Bates?
No.
Counselor Carter?
Yes.
Counselor Kerr?
Yes.
Counselor Colanzey is absent. Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Tie vote. Motion loses.
Mr. Mayor, I have an alternative suggestion, AKA, or maybe motion?
Counselor McQuaid England?
That staff report back to the first available committee meeting on what is needed for a community risk assessment, including timelines, to ensure we have that completed by 2019? With it? I'm just going to write that.
Counselor Neal is the second here. Counselor McQuaid England was writing it down, so we'll give her a chance. Counselor McQuaid England, make yourself comfortable, write it, and we'll wait.
Okay. And the reason for this, at the earliest committee meeting, is I think that, I think that we need to have a better understanding of what the legislative responsibility is in terms of what we need to do as elected officials to protect our community. So, having staff come back and explain the community risk assessment, I think is the best way to do that. I just need to, I don't even remember how I worded it now. And just to make sure that the, I've read it right, it's that staff report back at the earliest meeting to present on the community risk assessment. And then in terms of direction and timing, obviously, it's the earliest meeting. And it's just to ensure that those that have the legislative authority here understand what this new legislation means and what's needed within that assessment. I think that that would be appropriate. And then at that time, we can discuss how we're going to implement that or how that should be implemented based on understanding the entire process. Also, that will allow time for residents of the community to get involved and, and understand it.
Counselor Neal?
And would this also include anything to do in regards to our going-forward progress in trying to find the property for Fire Station Number Seven?
So, this, Counselor Neal, this, Counselor McQuaid, this is very big. Chief, do you understand that the, the motion is staff report back at the earliest meeting to present on the community risk assessment?
Make direction to the fact that this is new legislation that will be, in fact, in July of 2019, and I would like to make sure that all of council is aware of that new legislation, what the requirements are, and what our duty is as a body that makes these decisions within that community assessment. So, it's understood.
And I appreciate that, Counselor McQuaid England, but I'm asking, the motion is written. I'm asking the chief. Chief, do you understand the intent of the motion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I believe I do, and, and maybe I can suggest we can just submit a report at the next committee meeting.
Okay. Counselor Neal, you still have the floor, sorry.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Now, as you can ask, has there been any, I don't know if this is the right time to ask it, if they're going to do this work, but is there any progress on Fire Station Number Seven getting a piece of property for?
So, Chief, the, the question is, is part of the community risk assessment, will it be talking about Fire Hall Number Seven?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Counselor Neal?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions to the motion? Counselor Pitterbecky?
To be clear on it, I'm not quite sure that I, are we also going to be looking at the possible, the costs involved if we go to another firm for a reassessment, or would we be bringing back in that report the cost of doing that?
Mr. Mayor, as the mover of the motion, I'd like to, I'd like to field back question in terms of the direction that was given. This is simply to ensure that we're all on the same page with legislation. This isn't about costs. But if at that meeting, council would like to make direction or a decision that would involve going out for tender in order to complete this process, at that time, that's when it would take place. There's no costs associated with this other than staff time to ensure that we are caught up on the legislative authority, on the legislative changes that have taken place in relation to community risk assessments and what our responsibilities are as council members.
Okay, members of council?
Heard a vote, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, can we have the motion read, please?
The motion is that staff report back at the earliest meeting to present on the community risk assessment. And a recorded vote, a vote has been called by Counselor McQuaid England.
Be happy to add an amendment in reference to new legislation.
That is, we've heard from the chief that it is new legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've called for the vote. There are no more questions. Counselor McQuaid.
Counselor McQuaid England?
Yes.
Counselor Neal?
Yes.
Counselor Pitterbecky?
Yes.
Counselor Sanders?
Yes.
Counselor Shields?
Yes.
Counselor Aker?
Yes.
Counselor Bates?
Yes.
Counselor Carter?
Yes.
Counselor Kerr?
Yes.
Counselor Colanzey is absent. Mayor Henry?
Yes.
So, that carries. Members of-